Right, uh, so I welcome, I'm starting tonight's meeting Monday, July 28th, 2005. All right, 2025 at 6:31 PM. All members are in attendance and we are recording. Please rise for the pledges. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ready, so just a couple of agenda items tonight. And first off, we have a somber one, which is a citation for William Ambrosino, who just recently passed, and I'd like to read that off for you here. Uh, so a lifetime mended, sorry, let me start at the beginning. The town of Mendon official citation, be it known that the town of Mendon Select Board hereby offers their deep gratitude for the life and legacy of William Bill Ambrosino, whose dedication and service will never be forgotten. A lifetime Mendon resident and tireless advocate for improving life and government in town. Bill served the town for 17 years as an elected member of the Chair of the Planning Board, and in addition to serving as the Chair of the Master Plan Committee and the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee. Bill's involvement with the Regional Planning Group CMRPC created many planning opportunities for Mendon that would have been unobtainable without his efforts. In addition to these important roles in town government, Bill was a local business owner and heavily involved in coaching his daughters in youth sports. Bill was a model of civic engagement, and the town owes him a great deal of gratitude and admiration, given this 28th day of July 2025 in the town of Mendon, Massachusetts. And this will be signed by all of the board members. Um, and then before I ask the board for feedback, I'd just like to call up the police chief to read something that he has written on behalf of the police.
Thank you. Um, so likewise, wanted to say something to the police department, too. I've known Bill my whole career here, knew his brother Carl, know his brother Carl. Had great relationships, always been community involved. Whenever he needed something, whatever, if something had to be done, you could make a phone call and you know the answer right away, and he'd help out any way he could. So I just wanted to do a letter recognition on behalf of the whole police department. To the family of William Bill Michael Ambrosino, on behalf of the entire Mendon Police Department, I wish to extend my deepest condolences and sincere gratitude as we honor the life and legacy of William Bill Ambrosino. Bill's passing is a profound loss, not only to those who loved him, but to those of the entire Mendon community. His unwavering dedication and selfishness, selfishness services to our town over the past 17 years have left a lasting mark on Mendon's future and character. As Chair of the Planning Board, the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee, and the Master Plan Committee, Bill gave tirelessly to the time insight and leadership. His commitment was not just measured in hours, but in heart, vision, and unwavering belief in improving the place that we all call home. It is public servants like Bill who quietly shaped the very foundation of a safe and thriving community. His efforts helped guide responsible development, preserve Mendon's character, and ensure a thoughtfulness growth for future generations. Outside of his civic contributions, Bill was clearly a man devoted to his family, a father who found great joy in coaching his daughters and celebrating life's simple but important moments. His legacy will continue through them and through the many people he impacted with his work and example. The Mendon Police Department joins the entire community mourning his loss and celebrating his life. We thank Bill for his outstanding service, and we salute him for his commitment to the people of Mendon with a heartfelt sympathy and enduring respect, Chief Dave Kersey.
Thank you, Chief. Very nice. Uh, board, have there any questions?
Well, I just want to say that I, just like Jimmy and Lonnie, I grew up with Billy. So literally, I worked with Bill, worked at the same company for a while, and you know, served here on town boards, and I will say that Bill was never afraid to speak up about what he believed in and said what he believed and did whatever he could to make things the way he thought it should be. I wish everybody who lived in this town would be willing to serve the town the way that Billy did, and Billy loved Mendon. He loved his friends. It's just, I feel like the piece of the town is gone. There's a lot of other great people to fill in, but Billy will be missed, and I'm grateful.
I knew him a much shorter time than many of you, but I was happy to have the opportunity to work with him. I found his dedication to the community inspiring, and I'm deeply grateful for the legacy that he left, especially with the master plan. That is something that will really have an impact on our community for potentially generations. So that work that he did will really have a lasting impact. But personally, I enjoyed working with him. I found him to be gracious. He definitely spoke his mind, but also he was, he was kind and encouraged other people to give to the community. So he definitely will be missed.
So I want to echo some of those sentiments. So I had the opportunity to work most recently on the zoning bylaw committee, and it would be very hard pressed to find someone else who loved Mendon as much as you did. They choose to vote.
I mean, I met, I first experienced Bill was actually through youth sports coaching. So that's where I first met Bill, but I first joined the select board, first go around. I think I'll always appreciate his support and guidance he gave me, you know. He's, he has opinions, he has perspective, and it was actually a wealth of knowledge for somebody like yourself for stepping into this role. Always been a great part, as a member of the planning board, the select board thing. Luckily, he did everything in the best interest of the town about the board of the community he was on. So always appreciate his, his work here.
Thank you, everybody, for your feedback. Yeah, he was a really awesome guy, and I knew him through coming to this board as well. Um, and he didn't hold back, like you said, first time I met him. Um, I think what's really great about people like Bill is the fact that he, I don't think it's a maybe, I think it's a definite that he left a lasting impression on the town. He shaped the way, uh, you know, Main Street looks here in Mendon and, and the way that we live here through the board, and that master plan is going to be here for another 10, 20 years. So, um, it's pretty awesome. He didn't do that so that people would see his name in lights. He did that for the town, and that will be here forever. So it's pretty great to have people like that. So we thank you, Bill. Um, and the audience, I know there's a little gathering here. Does anybody want to say anything before move on to business?
Great job, everybody. Thank you.
Right.
I had the opportunity to spend a lot of time with Bill in the last month. Well, the last 40 years, but more so in the last month because he was home. And, uh, I'm sure all of you know, Bill and I have been very close for extremely amount of great times. But it was very, he was very proud of the town of Mendon. And one of the things that he wanted everybody to know moving forward is the fairness and the kindness that the boards, in all boards, need to use to, to move forward would be just to replicate what he's been doing all these years. You know, Bill and I got on the boards together. We did spend 15 years together on the planning board, and I gotta tell you that there was never a choice of who would be the chair. Bill took charge, and whether he had the time or not, he put everything he could into it. The master plan was so important to him. He, he, uh, he, he'd lose sleep at night planning that master plan. It was, uh, it was heartwarming watching him do that. But to see the way he held himself, even in the last moments of his life, not a, not a complaint, not a, not a no fear of anything, like he portrayed himself with life. You know, he, uh, yeah, he moved on, making sure everything was correct for his family and for the town of Mendon. And proud to call him my friend. Pretty, pretty important. That, uh, the town, I apologize.
There's nothing to apologize.
The town needs to always recognize Bill Ambrosino. He was able to assure he wanted to thank the select board and the planning and all the boards, especially all the people he worked with. He was very proud to do what he did. He knows he made a difference. He hopes that everybody will follow his lead. Really, the Ambrosino family is greatly appreciated. I hope you all can understand why they couldn't come there. Um, it's pretty big shoes to, to fill.
Yeah, we understand.
And that's why he asked me to come and do this one. But again, he wanted me to thank all of you. He was definitely proud to be in the town.
Thank you. I'm sure he was proud to have a front line. You seem like an awesome guy. So thank you so much. We'll get that.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Move on to, uh, select board goal setting, which seems a little deflated after such an important moment, but I think Bill would have us move on and do what's best for the town. So, uh, all right. Jeremy, in a second, is going to put up a little PowerPoint slide that has just a bit of a summary of our chart here. And for the high level kind of yearly goals, you can refer back to that. Five goals we threw out for the town administrator. Those come out of these SMART goals quadrants that we did from our last planning meeting with Collins Foundation. Um, so I will throw this off to Jeremy to go through his slides.
Yeah, thank you. So, um, this is going to look a lot like what we did in January for the first couple of little slides, but we're going to do a bit of recap and then what we want to talk about for fiscal '26. So same idea, want to make sure we know what we're talking about. We're going to review what's going on outstanding. We're going to say what we want to do going forward, and then kind of have a roundtable for everyone. Um, so similar to, to our January discussion, want to make sure we know what we're talking about in terms of organizational approach. So we're not, we're not talking about the day-to-day. We're not talking about what our mission statement is. We're talking about kind of in the middle, our, our goals. So don't want to get too granular. Don't want to get too highfalutin about things. I want to be a little bit in the middle in this discussion. So, uh, review our fiscal 2025 goals. So we had five, so I'm going to go through these. So first goal was appoint and quorum and meet for the capital planning committee and agricultural committee. So the capital planning committee has met once. We have another meeting coming up. They've been appointed and they've met. The ag comm has been appointed, but I've not yet met. And a subsidiary goal to that was a holistic committee assessment. We'll get on that a little bit later in this presentation. Second goal, again, these were set January 29th as a fiscal 2025 goal to be accomplished by June 30th. So vote to adopt select board policies and procedures, financial policies, and personnel policies. So we adopted the select board policies and procedures. The financial and personnel ones have taken longer than anticipated, and we have not presented those to the board for adoption. The personnel policies, I would say probably 60% done. Financial policy is a little bit more than that. I've given an update a few times in that we, you know, it's just, it's, it's taken a little bit more refinement than I initially anticipated. So it's a calendar year '25 goal for me to be able to, to be able to, to be able to close this out. So I want this to remain a goal for the select board, because I want, I want to get things closed out in, in short term.
To that point, I just want to remind people that we as a board actually chose to push some of these forward, knowing that I can beat that fiscally here today. These other things have come up. So hearing this for the first time, financial policies in general, we actually extended that specifically. So we'll make sure that's out there.
And also, right, this meeting was the end of January, so already well into fiscal '25, so it's another bit of framing.
Yeah, I said I would do the budget. Yes, even with that, but, uh, we're, we're much closer now than we were six months ago. And I think pushing it out a few months ends up with a much better work product and a much better document for the town. So thank you for your graciousness about that. Uh, fully built out organizational chart. So similarly, so we developed an org chart, went through it a number of times. So this includes, I think very importantly, includes positions that the town does not currently have incumbents in, does not currently fund in its budget, but what a fully built out org chart would look like. So things like, um, a independent finance, finance director, or assistant town administrator, or what a full staff fire department looks like. So that I've developed that org chart over many iterations. It was not in the fiscal '26 budget book, but it will be shared in this group. We'll talk about it. It'll be an agenda item for the fiscal '27 budget book. So it's a document that exists and is ready for you. Um, the last two goals, launch survey on employee engagement morale, and then develop key performance indicators and measure the Mero for year. So we launched a survey, we got feedback, and that was shared with this board. It was overwhelmingly but not universally positive, which I think gives us some blocks to build on, but says a lot. And I was proud of where the organization is. So we'll continue to do that year over year. KPIs, we've gotten a number of submissions from departments on what they think their individual department key performance indicators will be. We'll have an agenda item for August 6th to talk about those things. It's, it's what departments think are important to them. But I've spent some time with select board member Mike Goddard about how to kind of take that to the next level and how to measure both inputs and outputs, and rather than just, these are the number of things we do to a more, uh, kind of talk about effectiveness and efficiency level. So we're, we're starting on departments like council and aging that we think gather a lot of data to begin with, and then see how they can improve that data, and then layer that approach across the organization. And then the last goal was close that trast property question. So the actual text of the goal was to have an annual town meeting appropriation to buy out life estate. So we weren't there, but we have a finalized report from a appraiser on the value of the life estate and the value of the property on the open market. How we go forward on that is an open question. We have an executive session scheduled with town council on August 6th to talk about what that next step is. So while not an annual town meeting, action item like was initially stated, certainly confident we can have a special town meeting in the fall to go forward. So that's where our fiscal '25 goals are, again, set in late January. And I think we're, you know, we've accomplished most of them and are making steps towards, towards completion of the rest of them.
There's one, one thing that when you think of January, something like the trast property has been discussed and talked about at nauseam by this board, previous boards, and it's out there. I think by doing what we did in January and getting to where we are now, so just it applies the right focus and the important things that were leading to be important and we're making good progress. So once again, as Jeremy's being awfully honest with not having it done for annual town meeting, that was a stretch goal, I would say.
You're saying we should celebrate the fact that we said we were going to do something.
Yeah, I mean, this is the first go. We'll get better in terms of assessing how long will things take. But I think, and I think about trast specifically, in six months, we went from, we're not sure what, how to do anything with it, except that we have to do something with it, to be a point where we recently assured that at a town meeting, we might have a plan of action. It's pretty good progress.
Yeah, significant progress.
I really would feel like to make a point that for a long time, and I say as far as I, since, since I was on, joined the finance committee, that was, we were still on the board the first time, Mike, that this town, and not because of, and I'm not, we were, we were in a, almost like a crisis management zone, where everything that the town did, we just went from year to year with the budget and just, you know, was just trying to make it. And we kind of transformed from the point where we actually have a plan, and we're forming it, and it's not easy. Anybody, anybody who's been involved, I mean, even going back to what we just talked about with, with Billy Ambrosino, you know, this, this master plan that he finished, that was his third shot at doing it over a course of more than a decade. So I, I think just, just the idea that we, going from where we started a couple of years ago with a, with a goal planning meeting, right, to where we are now, it's been light years, you know. So I think we made great progress.
Who did that for us, David?
It was like the first, the first thing we did, I think. We just did it ourselves. We just did a reclamation. I think Mike actually facilitated that. It's terrible dependency, too, thanks.
That is true.
Oh, you said.
That allows for liability.
Jeremy, is that in the archives here?
The paper archives.
Yes, yes, that. There we go. Yes.
Actually, that's, that came from, that actually, that came from a, from a training class I was doing for the state police that, that format, on the board. Oh, they actually, the path.
So you went a little bit into January, so it's planning of policies and procedures. We're still working on it. Select board's policy procedures checked, capital plan, we're doing it. Department head meetings, I have one on August 5th. So we're, the difficulty in that is we have one person department, so we need to shut down offices and buildings in order to have department head meetings. So I'm, I'm very conscious of the non-competitive gravity.
Yeah.
I think when we say department head meeting, you think about, that was a specific idea, saying we should have department head meetings because communication was lacking. So the objective was to increase communication and understanding across boards, departments, and operations. So going forward, something like that is, we should make sure we give Jeremy enough leeway to have accomplished the objective in any number of ways.
Make sure people know what's going.
Yes, yeah, I mean, it was all about communication. We said, oh, I think David did a department head meeting. He said, okay, that works, let's do that. But, you know, it can take many forms.
So it probably quarterly is my, is my goal. Not, we're not going to do a monthly thing. But I send out things on, on a semi-regular basis that says, kind of, here's where my head's at. I think folks don't like hearing transformative information for the first time, kind of in a group with a bunch of people. So if we're going to kind of change something, we want to do a slow build, a listening tour sort of thing. And that's what we try to do with that communication. Find town administrator role, that's your goal in here. Five-year road maintenance plan, we're on that. Bylaw review committee, we've got those set up. Select board policies and procedures, we have that. Senior center expansion, ongoing library rectory, they just finished there. Our earmark study, trast property, and Cook cemetery, cemeteries are on the list as a future townwide at once. So these were our proposed, and I just went through A, B, C, D, E. What I talked about here in my next slide, future goals from the January 2025 session. We've got multiple we've got multiple multi-year goals. So water sewers and commercial districts, defining and implementing a town mission statement, which in that pyramid, that hierarchy we were talking about before, is much higher on it. Codify what the town administrator role is. We had, we had an intern earlier do a little literature review of town administrator bylaws and provide me with that. Design and execute department measurement tools, holistic committee assessment, and build out town internet. Launching our new website tomorrow. So town internet will be, will be part of that in short order. So these were our multi-year ideas that came out of, came out of our January 2025 goal setting session. So what I want to do now is something similar to what we did in, in our January session, is to do a roundtable, get some ideas on the board, and then after each board member gets an, an opportunity to say what their individual goals or ideas for fiscal '26 are, then go through and prioritize and do the same thing. Say, this is a multi-year thing. This is, this is something we're not going to accomplish right now, but it's something we want to do for the town. And we can matrix it as well and say, bias versus separation versus culture versus stuff. So want to start, share with us what, what your goals, expectations.
Uh, well, I'll just, I'll share one. Something I'd like to see as spinach is down off, and I'd like to, to catch up with building maintenance. Have a lot of unused space that could be used when there's people, you know, and boards and whatnot around town that possibly could use space and don't have it. So, yeah, one of, one of my, one of my big goals this year is to see how we can do that efficiently, kind of clean up some of our space. If you haven't noticed, Katie has been quietly cleaning the stage so that we have a little bit more presentable background. It's, it's, um, part of our culture. It's part of what the town represents, our physical space. So I just want to button that up a little bit later, and I think we can do it without a lot, without a lot of money.
I mean, this could be HVAC even some.
HVAC would be awesome.
Yes.
As the temperature rises.
Honestly, it's a sample smoking.
Yes.
Mike? Uh, my top is a one-year business budget plan. So develop the five-year budget plan, incorporate forecasts of revenues and expenditures based on proposed business objectives, the things like increased headcount, staff across departments for multiple years, capital debt, payment funding within the levy versus still doing debt exclusion. So that's a, yeah, a multi-year financial goal.
Wonderful. So the one that I would most like to focus on is actually one that you have on your slide right there. I think codifying the TA role is very important.
Second.
So that, that's something that I
So that, that's something that I, I would like to get on.
It's a high, like, work item, like, there's a lot of work to be done there, though.
Yes, exactly. But I think, I think it's something that we probably.
The TA would love that.
Got something to say. So appointing authority for non-departmental positions or appointment authority under the purview, select board accepts some sorts of things. Signing a period payroll and expense warrants, so I think that's kind of this approval that select board has, but there's not an effective review of what those warrants are, it's very much after the fact, based upon the timing of warrants in select board meetings. Whereas I see the warrants briefly. There's a lot of the great TA bylaws have stuff about, it's my responsibility to, it's my role responsibility to present a balanced budget by X date. And that, that means that that's the calendar, that that means it gives us a starting point rather than the morphist sort of. What's a budget system like? Prepare town meeting warrants for your review, the collective bargaining, codify what chief procurement officer is, and make the TA that kind of by default. Supervise and manage day-to-day operations under purview, select board.
Can I ask on the procurement officer, did, when you're reading these bylaws, do they make it like a separate position that you also have, so it could be removed sometime later, like if we do grow big enough to move that job or somebody else?
Yeah.
Without taking apart the bylaw?
So some of the bigger ones say, the town administrator shall, um, town administrator or their designated shall serve as the chief procurement officer. So if, if there is a, you know, five-person finance department and the finance director, treasurer, treasurer collector, and reasonably serviced the chief procurement officer, it gives the town administrator the ability to say, you are the chief. Set max contract length, so that's something that hasn't been initiated here, because three years is is pretty typical. But I've seen a lot of places that set a max rate of five years. So, and then this is, this is an importantly contractor grant authority, so the ability for the town administrator to sign a contract up to an X dollar amount. And it, sure, I, I had a meeting with the fire chief earlier today about something entirely unrelated, and I said, because he's essentially a weak fire chief and I'm a bigger town administrator, that the only things we can, we can do have specific select board folks to do it. So to codify this in a bylaw would say, you know, up to ten thousand, up to fifty thousand, whatever it is, is something the town administrator can sign. And then have some housekeeping stuff on abilities to implement personnel policies and and sign employment agreements and things like that. Yep, and special act has blocked that kind of smaller language. So this is stuff I've been thinking about, I've had other folks think about, so it's something I'll be able to prevent in a more polished way.
Blaina?
So I have some, I think my goals are somewhat meta-goals, so so, I mean, I do find that the defining and implementing a town mission statement, I sort of feel that that void at the top of the pyramid about like what is going to guide the the future and sort of relatedly, I would be interested in some or like codified mechanism for holding us to, like, we've done a lot of studies, you know, there's, so that there's like both the board has had, like the Cullen Center study, I know, as well as, you know, a number of past studies, and there's been a lot of input from employees, and the master plan also had a giant survey mechanism, and I would love for us to have some formalized way of checking in on these goals. So like, I feel like that could be related to developing a mission statement, is we have all of this data that we have gotten from multiple sources, including, you know, including professionals as well as, you know, members of the community. And I think just a reminder to check in with that.
It would be interesting to say something like, if, if you, if the board obtains a consultation of type X that the board must respond by, you know, three months after X thing is, yeah, that would be an interesting. Is that what you're talking about? You're saying trying to put like enforcement behind?
I think so, a reminder, and I think because the board changes over time, and I know there was staff, some staff expressed frustration with the Cullen Center study because there had been another study a few years before. But to make, I guess, perhaps maybe have more transparency around how these studies will be used, what goals are coming out of them. And, you know, the master plan, just, you know, honoring Bill Ambrosino and others' work in this, like, we have talked at different times about how we might bring that in, and I think there's, there's a lot of good information in there that I think many of it connects to goals that we have and that we've talked about, but if we could be more direct in sort of saying like, yes, this goal relates to this larger expressed goal from the community or from.
Analysis paralysis for the board analyzing everything to avoid making decisions.
I think it's just ignoring the study which it's done. I think by doing goals like we're doing, master plan, calling center state, that becomes the information sets we would use.
Right.
So if we identify it's board, what we want to execute, whether it's single or then I think too, what I also heard was, let's make sure we're drawing the, the direct line back to the staff, to the people out there, that's why.
Right, and because I, I, from what I understand, a past Cullen Center study did like result in some changes to some pay structure, not as met as broadly as the, you know, current one may, but like, but.
Their, their desires.
Well, it could be, but I think, but I think if we can just be intentional about how we document connections of even any goals that we define and sort of the the past research that has been done in the past. Yeah.
So there's community treatment that, like, for.
Or, right, clearly that it, that it reflects that, I mean, because I think it is community-driven, we're all here because we are members of the community. But we don't always say like, oh, yes, this connects with the master plan. We do a lot of times, but not in a but not in a direct way, so, yeah.
That makes sense.
So, yeah, this is, I know, it's, it's a little nebulous, but I think we can, we can come up with some sort of goal.
Sure.
Like a, like a metric. Assess, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. I'd like to solidify the town real estate plan and where everything from, what are we going to do with that civil wall monuments, stay in the same place? Cemetery, what do we have to do with the half-built shell of buildings? Already talking about the trash property, but we started to put together this sort of, all the different town pieces of land, pieces that the town took for taxes or should take the taxes, because we don't know what it belongs to, because we, I mean, there's a lot of, like I said, loose pieces. I think we have to start with.
Yeah, it's probably time for us to take responsibility for some of that, and back to what Elena was saying, attaching that to townwide goals.
Right, because those definitely are, many of those things are mentioned in the master plan.
Yeah. Actually, sometimes the the solution to some of our problems, it gets buried in that.
Yeah. I agree. Back to me.
Yes.
Yeah, I had something on the plan that now I just lost. Oh, right, so I think so back to the senior center. And and how this ties to what Mike was just saying about buildings and land. There are some sticky unresolved things like that shells building, like the, the not passing of the senior center expansion, and so the reality is we have to have an honest conversation with the senior center coming up. But overall, I don't believe that these business units in general should have to go through this so regularly, and if we had a deeper plan about how we could extend or expand any space here in town and what that would take, because we had an inventory of it, because we knew what we were doing with it, because we didn't have to answer questions about whether or not we were going to use it. That might help with some of these things, so like the fire department is a great example, their growth is required, there's going to have to be some shuffling around, they don't that's, we can't necessarily pay for a whole new station at the moment, but there are things that we can move around and shuffle and extend perhaps spaces to give them more room, and it's the same thing over at highway, you know, parks are all scattered about, there's expansions that they're, you know, we've approved a, a new building over there to put some stuff in there, we've parked a little bit closer, there's all that type of knowledge of what we have, and then the efficiency of the reshuffling to make it easier to expand things for you. Maybe putting some, taking the physical plant, physical inventory and putting some, it's possible.
Does it plan improvements additions?
Gathered.
Execute. As a board, we need to figure out how we're going to use the comp class study, and that means in terms of potential adjustments that would probably lead to some sort of strategic policy and where we want to be on going.
Definitely.
Prepare us, stamping.
Do you want to declare the output as more than just the salary, but everything that goes along with it?
Yeah, it should be, I expect job descriptions, salary bands, but also policy standpoint, salary bands, salary band, where do we think, and it should be comparatively in local municipalities, be it the top end, the bottom end, the median, going up, we need to have that discussion, we need to be able to negotiate. So within this fiscal year, one of our negotiations, well underway, possibly done. But we as board also need to kind of express where, what we think the right, where does men need to sit based on the non-trainout have, will have.
There are a few things I was going to overlay on this to say these are my goals, and I think you should consider them. So we received the final comp class study on Friday, and I'm preparing kind of a contextualizing memo to be able to send it out to to you all, and then we'll have a a executive session with people to discuss it, what that means for collective bargaining strategy, but then we'll send that study out, and I said this last time, we'll send that study out to the unions, right, they, we're going to be working off the same, the same, same information. So that is one hundred percent a thing that I think needs to be executed in fiscal twenty six, right, our contracts expire at the end of fiscal twenty six. We've already had one, two, three, three unions reach out to us to say, want to, here's our intention to negotiate for the next contract, so that really needs to be implemented. I will also say that there have been a handful of folks who have individual contracts who have reached out to me to say to like, want to, in light of, they don't know any specifics, but in light of the comp class study, I want to either reopen or use this as an opportunity to negotiate the next iteration of our individual contract. So, yeah, for me, that's super important for fiscal twenty six.
I think it's also ties in with multi-year financial roadmap.
So there's this interesting way to, to be able to overlay what, what an override looks like, an operational override looks like into a multi-year financial plan, and to say we'll just get into four or five, probably shift cost.
There's just a big story on the radio about it, so.
Yeah, yeah, the PFFM and IAFS are using local events to their advantage, and I think that's going to resonate in a lot of means about across the.
Brendan?
Um, so I guess continue our transition to stuff from our services. Facilities department. With an emphasis on
succession, put the leadership in that areas.
I think we should do the Brussels. I know we don't have a, a good bench on a lot of departments.
We have a instructor. Say that, and nice white, right, so we're super thin, right, so I said, we have department head meetings, we close departments, you know, because we have department heads. So building a match, you know, we've got an assistant, we're about to hire, or about to post a board assistant town clerk, but it's a town position. Assistant treasurer collector is like one of the best examples of that in the non-public safety department. So, yeah, the town really needs to think about how we, how we build that bench, how we build that administrative capacity. Because folks retire, these are bigger communities, there are different holes, or whatever, knowing reasons, folks leave a job.
Yeah, I mean, I think we, we as a board experienced about eighteen months of interesting processes, and we didn't have succession planning in place.
Was very interesting.
You know, but my point is being, goes back to that multi-year roadmap, because to do succession planning, make sure the staff are in here, possibly staffing up in small numbers to be able to cross-train to develop succession planning, contingencies for the operations. Prepare well, we can, you know, we've got multiple single points of failure, for people listening, single point failures just means breaking the process, it doesn't mean somebody failed. Just want to clear that up, because it had been misinterpreted in the past, I believe.
Yes.
But, yeah, so I think it's, sometimes we have to.
Elena?
So, can you go back to the other side? I think my, I mean, a lot of these goals are ones that I also sort of had on my, my list, but I think the, the, the committee assessment is also key, so that there are so many people contributing to how this town functions, and so I think so doing an assessment, but also doing maybe, again, some more formalized checking in with the committees, you know, in the past. Once in the past, there was like a multi-committee meeting with chairs invited, but just encourage more communication across committees as well as with us, so I think, you know, that we have our liaison work, but we don't sort of have a regularly reporting back about what's going on, like, there are some times, you know, times when we have an issue that we bring forward from a committee that we're liaison to, but I think it would be, I think it would be good for our, like, boards as a whole to have, you know, more, more cross-talk and communication among committees, just sort of paralleling what's the goals with the departments.
Close, or every committee you appoint is a creature of the select board, so to have communication from the board is, yeah, it's great.
Mike? I'm sorry, Elena, did you have something?
No, I was just saying that some, some committees are more direct with asking for select board input.
They shouldn't have to be, is what you're saying, should be in culture.
Right, but I think we, it's part of the succession planning, right, not everybody is sort of, has the same experience with leadership, and so, and we want more people to be in that position, and so we, I think we have an opportunity to help foster that by, you know, making it easier for those committees to do their work.
Mike?
I think something to piggyback on what you was just saying is, we've talked about this a few times, there was some, some way to facilitate you know, town board-wide meeting, regular cases, whether it's quarterly or every six months. We are chairs, we have representatives from every every board committee that are coming together, and everybody kind of gives it the status. And everybody kind of gives a status for the board, you know, so except for those that everybody else would have what's going on.
Right.
Better on the town, town meetings or whatever.
Yeah, there, there was at one point a, an effort to have like each border committee give a little dwork about what their committee was doing. I remember doing that once when I was uh. Chair of the taxi committee. So I mean, I think it was, it was an idea that I think had promise, but.
To select board to a town meeting. What's that?
Choose.
It was.
I guess to, to the select.
But I think meant to be communicated just across boards and committees. It sort of, I, I think the idea was something like a newsletter where everybody was contributing.
That's what it was going to turn into, but the idea was that, you know, there were boards that be. Kind of on their own ad hoc and they just don't, and to, to understand you're part of this big cohesive group, I think it just. This machine that gets created.
Yeah, so those, yeah, culture.
You're like, what you're describing would be.
Part of revitalization, for some committees, like it's, it's something, you know, revitalizing is something. Make sure it happens. I think what's important, part of the reason we may not get a lot of engagement from certain boards and committees is because. Everybody's silent. So only these are goals. If we're cleaning our goals out to boards and committees when they're impacted, because often you think about the, the housing production. You've got working committees that look at and say, that's stuff we've got to do. The, the more we can start to. Pop down in terms of here's, here are the key things in 26, 27. Make sure that these boards understand where direction, where send the direction. We can actually engage them to execute against in line, find that cascading execution based on what's playing out there. And that will be a natural way for them to come back and be involved, communicate, discussion.
One new ask, a kind of a rhetorical question. Do we think that all boards and committees that are part of the secondary understand their role?
No, absolutely not. No. That's, and I think that's part of the revitalization. You know what? And I, I, to go, to follow up on that. Just that question or that idea is something we talked about before. We need to make it clear that everybody has a voice and all of them have a voice. Clearly, you know, what's, I think, what's the real reason that anybody gets involved in a board committee? It's because they want to have a voice, they want to make a difference and they want to be part of this.
Right. They want to feel valued for their contributions and as well.
And what better way than to be with this, in this community of all these people that live in this community with you? And they've all got a purpose and all got a piece and all have an opportunity. And then it, everybody communicates together. I, I just think it would just, yeah, just speed up the whole process.
I, I think some of our goals, and I just think about inspection services. If you have somebody sitting in the audience, that might have piqued their curiosity saying, huh, wonder what that means? Because special services, border health. Are, you know, happy, obviously. So the more we can kind of start to. Make sure that's understood. How does that impact the border health? How's the border health having input for us in terms of what that starts to look like or how it function? Uh, once again, it's another way we're going to bring people back to the table to be uh, aligned if we want, yeah.
Fred, what you on the squad? I saw you sitting there.
I don't know. You have to contribute.
Right, um. Uh, culture is a minor thing. Uh, I'd like to see, uh, tagging out to the internet thing. I'd like to see a uh, like internal calendar. Of sorts, both for the select board and for uh, town employees. Um, I'll bring up a real simple, easy one that comes to mind every year, the holiday parties. Now, I'm pretty sure as long as this board beats, we're going to say yes to that holiday party. Uh, but we often forget until it's too late to do anything awesome about it. And then it just happens because we have some great staff who make it happen. But we should probably talk about that in October and not in December. And if it were on a calendar that we saw that like, hey, annually, we need to talk about these items annually. Uh, you know that alcohol is coming up, appointments are coming up, you know. It's an events calendar type of thing, uh, but there's also things that happen on a regular basis uh, inside the town. Um, you know. John's going to rotate the plows at a certain period of time, so.
Right, or, or even just the, for the annual town meeting, like just putting the dates in when. The warrant needs to be opened and closed and that sort of thing to have those uh, in one place, yeah, of references.
Something that you could look at and, and it would, since pre-agenda planning, it's a way to see what's coming up.
It's a one-stop shop for uh, you know, town employees and also if we, if it's open to the public as well.
Yes, well, yes. And you could pass your not obligated, throw out something every time.
When we sort of touch on that, be the uh, call it the municipal information program. Because I think it's broader than everything. Uh, that is more focused on design and feasibility, if possible.
That's to the public for transparency reasons.
That would be its financials, voices associated from age, almost like outscore card type of residence and then operational, production efficiency. So I scaled that back since January, if you haven't heard that, I'm paying design feasibility analysis for across the operations, highlight the work. I just want to get aggressive.
But that's not like annual town meeting output. You're talking about like regularly published output.
Yeah, yeah, I think it would be the board of the meeting, Jeremy would use it as poorly, but I also think it allows our heads to tell the story in a different way.
For like an executive.
Numbers, I did this many things. It's, this is what we provided. This is the feedback we got from residents.
To show the whole family.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the way I've tried to contextualize this is you write an annual report that says all these things. Let's, let's make it a more impactful way to say, it's not just, like I said, it's not just we did 35 things. We did, we did these 35 things. Here's what we spent on it. Here's what, here's the people that used it. Here's the people that came back to it. So it would, I think it would make their annual report um, and for. A richer life.
And it also makes your lives easier. If I link to a person, I don't think you've ever heard a request for, say, capital, that we didn't say, yes, it's needed. We might have asked questions because the reasons weren't necessarily articulated or. Or conceptualized in a way that made it clear. This type of program allows that to say, this is what we did, what we had, this is what we can do to get this. Much more focused and. Data-driven, I would say.
Brendan.
Uh, I want to just add on to something that I just already said about the inventory of town and properties. So I know that there, like several committees, say the town floors committee and the news committee kind of have a more arken. Vision of a trail network and outdoor passive recreation, how it works within the town, but also connects the trail outside of town. I just would like to, to them in that discussion, once we had an inventory to. How we do this lands.
That's a good add, because I would like a trail that goes around the entire town as a, as like a tourism whole.
I mean, we're pretty close in a lot of places.
We are, but there's just some complex things to get past and sticky spots that should be needed.
So that's sort of a intended use against.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, just one of the, the intended use. I just want to make sure that that is also.
That just.
Can, can break that open. What, to be something.
To be.
No, no, no. Well, I guess, when I think of what Mike brought up, because I had on my municipal parcel land. He said, what I had, is a holistic plan matrix demonstrates how municipal needs are aligned to existing parcels available for use. That would be like how I described the goal.
Yep.
Leverage the matrix to support ongoing planning, master plan execution, you know, going, going forward. The deliverable would be an inventory list with recommended uses. That could be a working room of some sort and communication artifacts. What I hear you saying is we have a partially completed trail system that is close to being done. I wouldn't want that to be held up like this because it's not, nowhere they are. In a separate objective 26, which is itself, the problems of the research here. This is more analysis and that's broader. I think yours is more at a point of execution. I'm just saying, don't, don't lump it in, pull it out, keep it out.
Sure.
I think that's one of the uh, situations where it is important to keep momentum. If you're building towards something, if it, if it lapses and the people.
The senior center was kind of supposed to help out with something that, the new senior center, right? So.
Yeah, exactly.
That replaced something's all.
And you've got half, you, there is a passion around doing what you described that led a spark as close to. Underlying something larger.
I know it, there are a number of people who are interested in being land stewards, for example, that I could imagine being excited about a project like that.
You can have a light answer, Derek.
So I don't have any new things to add, but I just, uh, a couple of ones that I had in mind were. We do need to revisit the senior center question. So I know, like, hearing about that report and reporting back and communicating, um, because that has been like. A goal for, you know, the past couple of years. And so, you know, things did not pan out the way some of us hoped, but uh, just making sure that, you know, we, we still have. We're still working towards solutions. Um, and I think that will be tied into some of the other projects, like the, the um, over, uh, overall inventory as well as some of the other long-term plans.
I think that somehow we need to, and this, this, this goes to some of Mike's financial. Concerns and plans. I, I think we need to wrap our head around. Debt exclusions, plan, uh, managing debt and anticipating debt. Because I think sometimes, you know, we, we think, we think in terms of, you know, our individual households and the goals of debt. And you pay it off and you rid it. But the reality is that the only way that you can function as municipalities planning debt exclusions. Because we've had a couple of times when, you know, uh, we, we pay off that, that, that debt exclusion and it drops off. Having replaced people's, you know, the, the tax levy actually does drop because this piece comes off. And then how do you, you can't put that gene back in the bottle again.
Yeah, so like, like a, a calendar of, of debt so that we could see that long-term, multi-year view.
Yes.
Where that well happens that we can fill it back up.
I mean, the schools were a great example. We knew that, you know, the back of our heads, we all knew that, that, you know, there was work that needed to be done and investments that needed to be done to upgrade things.
Twenty years, some other board is going to have a big well of debt coming off and they're going to have to put something in.
Well, they should, right?
Well, you're giving everyone a flash.
Yes, yeah.
So I've got, I've got a couple of files. I would like to deposit one.
Sure.
So on the finance side, so we got the property street colder project, which uh, we were recently awarded a hundred thousand dollar grant for the design services. Um, so the $300,000 that was appropriated by town meeting for design services, we were able to. Kind of move a hundred of that and use the grant for a hundred.
So that's a lot of, we can plow the grant money in.
Yep, uh, it was, it's helping go. We went about it in an unconventional way. Um, but um. Uh, we'll essentially use that extra hundred grand, that, that now repurposed hundred grand to say, we'll be able to get additional construction management services. Or, or use it towards construction itself. And we'll be, and we'll go for $500,000, it's called phase two of this grant program. Um, for construction costs itself. Um, but my, my goal, and like I laid out to the select board many months ago, was to get the debt associated with this. Inside of proposition two and a half. So to get a debt authorization from town meeting, but not required debt exclusion, which would marshalling increased taxes to be able to it. Um, so that's, that's a fiscal 26 and 27 goal of mine in order to be able to do this capital stack. Um, also on the finance side, we have no meaningful purchasing controls in town. Um, so if department heads want to do something, they do it. Um, so uh, part of the TA by law I talked about, where signing expense warrants. Um, would be implementing a uh, purchase order system. Um, so it would be doing it in a. A measured way for stuff over $10,000. So under chapter 3 of the B, stuff under $10,000. Um, it's just sound business practices, which currently the town gets authority to department heads to determine what sound business practice is. Um, from my perspective as chief procurement officer, something is $9,900. I still want a couple of quotes to go out and do that. Because I don't know, it should be 600, 900, or 6,900. Um, so uh, my, uh, my approach to that would be more of a kind of listening toward buildup. Department head buy-in, sort of, let's get uh, purchasing control. In my office as chief procurement officer for stuff over $10,000. Um, and then see how we can formalize that for, for purchasing rate large. I think department heads are really good now, once they get. At a big dollar level, they come to me and like, what do I need to do? Um, and we, we've done a good job on formalizing uh, RFPs, IFBs. It's that mid-level stuff that I want to.
How, how, uh, how big of a list is that? Is that software package that you're going to purchase or is that?
So the ledger we currently have, uh, is springbrot and uh, our accountant has not. Had any experience with implementing or source. So it would be something kind of outside of that. So our, we're a municipality, so our ability to pay bills is very, or not really, our process to pay bills is very paper-based. So we have a piece of paper with the invoice and someone signs it. Um, so my anticipation is that there would just be a layer on top of that, that there would be. Stuff over $10,000, there would be a pre-approval sort of thing. So the pre-approved, you have your quotes, you have your state contract, you have your whatever, whatever. Have your 30B, which is what governs most uh, goods and services in Massachusetts exemption. Um, you have that approval and it's signed and dated prior to when your invoice is dated. Uh, so it would be um, kind of a manual thing, not an automated thing. Our, our current ledger doesn't have that. Uh, springbrot is not nearly as. Into, not nearly as complicated, not nearly as useful as something like US, which lots of folks use for their ledger, uh, but. Costs probably three or four times what we pay for our ledger.
Right, that's great. Thank you.
Can I just, not, not to get off track here, but what is the current situation with spring?
So it, it's our, it's our ledger. It's a, it's a powerful quick books.
Let me, well, let me just, because when, when we switched to springbrot, that was a recommendation that was made and plugins and close to coming. You know, that was going to replace what we were using before. Uh, then a year later, springbrot didn't, springbrot was, had been purchased by somebody, we were going to install these plugins and they never developed them. And if it's a, I think it's probably two more years. This is still not good, this.
It's, it's pretty neutered. Um, it's, it's a ledger. It's a fancy spreadsheet. Um, we don't have.
We should, well, we need to remind our town accountant. On track, that he strongly recommended it.
So we, um.
We need some help.
So it, it, um, we transferred from KVS as I understand it, yes, and then those businesses. So we actually still use our KVS tool or our receipt module, and then that creates all the batch and we upload our receipt batches into, into springbook.
Yeah, I got a new, new uh, goal. We need to uh, rationalize our tech stack and software packages across town this year.
What, what is that?
That means if you put a new software package like a highway, I want to know if it can be used across the operation. Special permitting process, is that up to ours, KVS and springbook the right solution for us? I don't know.
So I think that's a logical, but we might not have the capacity, we don't have the skill set to do that right now, must we?
Well, and that's, that's really reading it up because we took. Well, and that's that's really reading it up because we took recommendation and it was a good recommendation based on what the person making the recommend making their initial was told.
Right.
But again, like you just said, the 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 replacement ended up being purchased by, you know, the company that replaced it all. They just they just didn't follow through.
I I think it's a stretchable to beat it, but we're not here on the internet. I hear questions about existing software packages. I hear we implement the highway work order system was to implement it. I'm not sure how that's output from it to tell me that. I just think that um this is one of those things that not never gonna happen unless we put some traction against it. When we put traction against it by saying, yeah, we think that's worth doing. So even even the text from you just share point of that whole thing. Honest Jason, you say, no, that that's.
I'm saying that like what you're asking is such a large lift that it's gonna push a lot of these things out of the way. So if it's something that you think is really important, it's so big, it's gonna consume many of these other things on it. So.
We've gotta add definition to what that means, but I'm still thinking it's important because we keep the patchwork. I don't know if it's such interoperable, things like that.
It's important. It's just like we have to talk about the yeah, the scale of its importance compared to everything else because of how much time and effort it will take our organization to do that work.
Well, how much technology do we actually have?
So that's the thing. We have a lot. We have a lot of physical technology like assets and have a lot of software assets like a lot. Uh, Jeremy's already sort of started this investigation and he's stumbling it. Every work does. And so it could be something as minor as a key for the PDF converter or something as large as our Office three sixty five licenses. The complexity and for each vendor is high. So somebody has to understand the overall complexity. We don't have an individual that does that. And to get somebody to do that means that that's their skill set. Like we hired somebody to do that. It's just a very large space and our our IT vendor does not cover. They cover a portion. I think it's a lofty goal. I think it's a good goal. It would create efficiencies for sure and our organization to do it. It's just so much work. It's like it's like taking out a Tom Paul project.
Well, you get it. You get it. You don't get it in terms of incremental pieces.
Right, yeah.
Inventory to start it to start, but also there there are major things. And I would suggest that as I agree with what you're saying, it's it's a lofty goal. It's a lot of work. But for the next person that comes in front of me is this, I need to buy new software package because my department's gonna do more efficient. I'm gonna say so that role, uh, we tried that earlier. It still went ahead. It's in. I don't know what's going on with it.
Does M M A offer any kind of resources like this? I know I know like for police, you know, there's there's like a statewide bid. There's you know, the the state does the does the research and tells the cities and towns. Police departments, you know, this is the way to go. Is there anything like that in MMA that could help us with software or IT?
Yeah. Not not that I know of. There are there are statewide bids up in tech, but it's case was the same same decisions and that there's six vendors that do thing A and another five that do thing T. You know, like, we're never gonna have like kind of a rise tech tool that works across the whole municipality.
You know who I white bet would have some insight to that? Is the bottom. Log this. I've talked with her a few times. I just just I'm listening to Mike talk and what you're saying. You know, implementing this and just not knowing. I I don't know. Maybe I'm just quickly maybe I should send.
Well, it seems like it's an extension. It's like a virtual.
I was thinking the same thing. Like, I just wonder if a step could be something like the capital inventory. But like asking departments to.
Yeah, man, an inventory would be.
Right, and but asking the department heads to inventory, but also give feedback about like shortcomings, right shortcomings, what like what they're.
There's a one time apply, then there's the maintenance, you know, yearly or whatever that we're putting in our budgets. And then what's the value that's coming out of that?
The road. Maintenance, we just add it to our budget. So I think now we need to make sure how are we using it? We get the bank to the bottom, things like that. Because there is value to it. But inventory is probably a good place to start. And it it's may not be everything, Jason. Maybe it's one of the big big hitters and one of the new ones because if you've gone up in the last two years, three years, so this boards me together. What have we told the taxpayers we purchased at least?
Yeah, and you asking like what have you, you know, it's been implemented. How? I don't know. It's very similar to Elena saying that like we need to make sure that we're um, you know, following up with the things that we so we purchase something big. Uh, you know, we should go back and follow up on that. It's a lot and you know, solving services, so we should follow up on that. It's the same type of thing. It's like, uh, what's the what's the boomerang on every time something is spent and we implement it? Like, how do we get that feedback back to the board that it's valuable that they got their minds where?
That and also to to that department headed that has this new tool. That person, the project department they're in, probably needs support to understand how best to utilize that tool. For their department, for the town, how can it benefit make their job easier? Just continue to reinforce that because it's not justifying why you got it. It's about you got it because it looked good. Just make sure you get thanks by terms of optimizing your operation. And and making your job easier to host a stuff designed to make it us more efficient for a second.
By the way, the highway worker system is doing very awesome for them. I just got a review of it today. So John's gonna come after highway season. It's not so busy. Fox report. That. Any, uh, do you have any more?
Yeah, so two things I had at the operation is our IT contract is up in this year. So this may not rise to the level of select board goal, but um it would be pretty either transformative, transformative. I don't know what I was shooting one day, but um I we need to put together our A for IT services. And we missed this at the last meeting. Our current IT vendor is not on the appropriate statewide contract to procure such services. So um, there are a number of procurement questions around um how we do IT manage IT services.
I'm sorry, say it again.
So there are two very popular statewide contracts. There was called the operational services division. To do IT services and our current IT vendor is only on the hardware contract, not on the service contract. So if we want to utilize the statewide contract, which we're under no obligation to do. But it's my interpretation that's what we did last time, um, even though they weren't yet on the statewide contract. They would need to be on this this contract in order for us to be able to do that. So we're doing some work now on making sure we know what we're be sure what we know, we know what we want to ask for. So it's a lot of how many licenses do we have? What's the what's the level of support we want? Um, are there particular departments that want a greater level of support and can be separated that out and a smaller piece of the contract?
It's a TA.
Right.
It looks like a TA.
He's gonna say it feels like an assistant TA.
So it's a it's a really big lift. It's not a big lift if you had a document that you did this three years ago, but we kind of don't. So it's and it's not creating it from scratch because other communities have done this and it's a solvable problem. It's just it's just a big lift and something that I think is really important for the town to put a clean button on. And then tech inventory. So this is something I've talked to our current vendor about, which is, you know, a, you know, serial number A to Z, what we own as a town and what our plan to refresh that is and what industry best practice is. So you know, you don't need to buy a new mouse every five years, but you need to buy a new service every five years, whatever it is. So to come up with a um, a executable, even if we're an ideal, we don't execute it, plan on on tech refresh. Um, and then some of the things that were while you were talking were debt debt exclusion management, um, and then purchase orders. Um, finance also sort of, you know, inside the levy debt. All right, one of those. Um, and then what I refer to tech stack optimization tying with capital.
Yeah, the the future multi year goals from the slide that was up earlier, are those captured in there? They had the review and water sewer.
Water sewers.
No, so.
Committee review revitalization.
Charter exploration was one that I had written prior. So I I I'm not gonna call you right. I saw both nodding and shaking your heads. So I don't know.
I think it would be. My nodding was remembering it. That was like no other, uh, yeah.
Exploration could be so discussions with town council. I talked to her about what that means and different ways it can be done. Yeah. If you think we're.
So community compact grants were why I vetoed out of a budget. So we don't have community compact. Um, which charter exploration was one of the abilities. So um, there's less less of a niche that. So that seems like a fiscal twenty seven.
It feels like there's a lot of things that we need to lay down. I mean, the the charter goal is an aspiration for this town kind of long term. But um, but yeah, there's still more railroad to lay down.
Right.
Right, yeah. Well, my my thing about all of that is that you know, talking about having this this meeting with all the different boards of communities together. And, you know, allowing individuals to get involved and come in and see. I mean, the reason that you do a town charter is because that you know, town meeting, individual volunteers, just, you know, things are too big that that doesn't work. I think you know, we're all we're doing right here is actually ultimately laying the foundation down for that. Because once people realize that, you know, everything's not getting done the way it needs to get done by, you know, by the townspeople, we need to take that next step. And I just I don't. And the only reason I would be against is it's just it is, I I think it's too tough to sell.
As I'm hearing you talk, I'm also wondering why none of us have said how we this is under the mission, but how we broadcast these goals to the town. How does the town understand what we've decided to focus on?
To to and to to continue the point. If you if we manage to get people to come to meetings.
We got one, Tom.
Right. But what I'm saying, but and and he's, you know, he's he's involved, right?
Yeah.
He's all right.
But if we can get people from all the boards and committees to come to these meetings. Because I'll guarantee you the the majority of them don't, they certainly don't come. They don't, they don't watch.
Well, we haven't invited them to be fair.
Well, correct. No, but that's.
Not like, not that they're excluded, but we didn't think about calling them directly.
That's what I'm saying. I guess what I'm getting at is if if we manage to get those folks in the room and they listen to what's going on, everybody has a voice and believe me, they do have a voice. Yeah, and it'll and it'll go at the speed of light.
I remember we did a good points.
Subpoint admission statement in January said communication succession planning, cross committee information sharing, developing welcoming culture and community engagement.
Well, it leaves for consistent.
Well, I mean, I think, well, that's another sort of ongoing meta goal is to make sure we revisit our past goals and have that continuity. And so like I I like the idea of saying like, oh, maybe that's a fiscal twenty seven goal, but like, you know, make a note of that for for that was, which one was that?
No reason these goals can't show up to be discussed once in a while on meeting agendas throughout the year as well. And I think maybe that that's good opportunity to sprinkle them in.
Right.
We'd say once yeah, but our goals. Coming on meeting. Our goal.
Right.
And specifically as by stakeholders.
Yeah.
And I think that'll fill up more than the rumbug, you know.
No, but it's a good opportunity for us to be clear that we care about uh what we're saying and we we care about what you think. And that's why we would like you to hear.
Oh, not taking the input. Don't get me wrong. That was a joke.
Yeah.
Is this an opportune moment? Remember the audience?
Yeah, Tom, why don't you speak? Just state your name.
Good evening, Tom Victor, sixteen Emerson Street. So I can, from my perspective, I can give you two viewpoints. As a resident, this was a great um meeting to hear. I heard a lot of great um ideas and topics that you're trying to accomplish. Uh, a tremendous amount. Um, and I think the key is where it will need to happen at some point is, um, and I love that acronym SMART that was up there. And I think a key letter that should go in front of that is the letter C. And I think you all kind of touched on it and that would be communication, communicate, C SMART. Um, and the, for me, the other letter in that acronym is A, achievable. You have to know what's achievable, right? So I would say PFC prioritize, focus, communicate. That's what it's all gonna come down to, right? Um, from a board members perspective, uh, also, I would love to, this would be the type of meeting when I would recommend every board listen to what took place tonight. And every board, every committee should hear what this conversation was all about, all these topics and items. So that everybody had a good understanding and foundation what the select board is got to tackle along with our town administrator. There's a lot going on in the town amendment. Whole lot. And you know, when you look at what is out there, everyone mentions something that's of great importance. Um, I guess it's tough part is figuring out what to focus on, what to prioritize and.
So like from the board of health's point of view, um, that word is very special as well because uh you don't report to the select board. Certainly you care what the select board is doing. Um, but you you are your own entity. And so uh, would that board be interested in listening uh on a goal session like this? Is that something that?
I would say, um, I don't want to speak for anybody, but knowing my fellow board members, I would say absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
I mean, it's. Yeah, we did. I I really feel a lot of soap for not thinking of it.
Can be ongoing, right? This is the goals are not a one and done thing. So like.
They have to be refined.
They right, they have to be refined. And I mean, I certainly think that it could be a way of communicating with boards saying like, we are developing both our short term and our long term goals. Is like from your committee standpoint, what are some priorities that that you see and, you know, share with them perhaps where we are and then, you know, get input to help us develop the future goals. And then maybe talk about how other boards and committees can help us achieve those goals.
That's 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 a point I was gonna make is you know, the the board of health has responsibilities, you know, to the town. And the question I really have is exactly you know, how can how can the select board, you know, enable you as a way to accomplish those? We've we've had discussions about it, but track track. Right, the whole trash removal.
Right.
Discussion about, you know, in any of that ongoing discussion is, you know, should it really stay as a fee outside the levy? Or should we really just move it into the tax rate? And just make it something that everybody in town pays into and everybody can use. This is, you know.
Well, we don't want to have that conversation just once a year at.
Oh, right. So we reach for these goals, different goals in a different state. That multi year financial plan is gonna touch everybody. So if we were to go down and create a multi year financial plan that this includes exclusive capital people, we would need to engage every board annual committee to hush in. What is your need? Trash, great, you know, what is there a capital need? Is there a financial? Uh, we know you see your contracts coming up with vendors in three years, whatever, five years. What do you expect that to look like? Because we're probably gonna need to build in some sort of maybe a decrease, probably an increase is taught, you know what I mean? But 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 so some of our goals are universal in the sense that there's no way we cannot involve any departments and committees, but I think identifying stakeholders for each of these actions, identifying actions, benefiting by these stakeholders. any departments and committees. But I think identifying stakeholders for each of these actions, identifying actions that identify these stakeholders because they need to go off to the later understand.
To the, to the topic of communication, I I heard it phrased, department heads. You know, meetings that would be coming up with department heads. So when I heard department heads, I think of, okay, well, most boy, I mean, everyone, every department has a head, but along with that department head, there's the board. So as a board member, my next question would be, how does the the board factor into that communication flow that would happen with the department head? Because it's going to be very important that the board is in sync with what the department head hears. And it may be beneficial actually to have the board members with the department head hearing the same information at the same time, in real time, as opposed to the department head hearing it. And then the department head then has to
Pass along.
Pass along and.
Probably happens like gonna come to a board meeting and then reiterate the town administrator's opinion or statements, and you're gonna discuss that in the meeting separately?
Well, that that's a possibility. I think it's very important for board members to understand and committees to understand that if you're going to be targeting a person, a key person in that department, that board has to be in sync with what, because it might be that whatever the, that department head is informed, maybe there's a, another viewpoint that the board might have. And you might create a quote-unquote back and forth. So my my thinking is, in that communication flow, if you can incorporate at least a board member, it's not the whole board, but a representative from that board level with the department head that operates on a day-to-day basis.
Hear from their perspectives and context.
Yeah, I think, I think that's, I think that's key, because now you, I think you're capturing two different levels there, because I know in the Board of Health, in a lot of cases, there's a lot of things that go on day-to-day that don't touch our board. Some people think that we see every, every plan and look at every design, and that's just not, not the case. If everything goes through perfectly and like, yeah, and there's no, no issues, the, our day-to-day people handle it. Jack and our health agent, Colleen, our engineer, Tom Ryder, the Title V person, Steve. So if everything's flowing nicely, they just handle things. The, the board may never hear about it. It's only when there's an issue or something that requires the board attention. So there's a lot of things that can sometimes get missed. We, and we try very hard to get, do the updates, you know, to have your activists update some things and try to stay in touch so something doesn't fall in the crack. But I think from a communication level, I think it'd be very important for the boards or some representative of the board to be hearing the same things that the department head, you know.
I don't think that's. The org chart that's been drafted, we also talked about identifying, yeah, dotted line linkage to department to the committee, board, president, operator as well.
It got a little messy with the actual dotted line, so it became almost like a footnote, but disposition is, because it, yeah, it kind of along. Yeah, it's it's noted.
Thank you, Tom.
Yeah, that's what I take is, this is, like I said, I wish more people were here. This is this type of meeting that everyone residents need to hear, as well as, I think, boards and committees.
Do it more than once a year.
Whether we're telling it's going to be on YouTube.
You said?
Tell it will be on YouTube.
Oh, there you go. Yeah. Put the word out.
I mean, we can do like a January stuff.
Right, like a, like a goal tech in, yeah.
We, you know, at at work, we just faulty release plan, right, where we have a one year and a six-year revisit of a one year. It's pretty normal. Not everything always goes.
Well, continue on.
Thank you. Appreciate your.
We agree that when you're thinking about a January or quarterly updated, that's more about the execution against those things we prioritize.
Not a, not a new discussion, I mean.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, like certainly, like when we get to July and we're reviewing the town administrator and the goals, like nothing should be a surprise that like, we should have addressed all of the reasons why things are happening way before.
So I think it's kind of prioritize on a number of things.
Should be grouped first. Cause I see a lot of writing up there in the corners, but I think there's a lot of umbrella.
So like we did, let me just revisit quickly, we did.
You called it Marcus, no.
So we, this is January, kind of label things A, B, C, D. So like, you know, we have multiple two C things or things. So we'll, we'll try to go in that.
Remind us what the A's like meant, like what, would it mean that two things had to fit one another?
They could be.
Did they, okay, they're part of the same, same.
Yeah, we had formalized and established capital improvement committee and also reevaluate and revitalize agcom and other less active committees. So we said both of those were A, and it was a point of form and meet for those committees. Then B was financial policy adoption and select board and policies and procedures. So we kind of moved those into. And then we did that, I'm not here to roll them, but.
Okay, thank you.
We did that with a, with a number of, we're relating. So here, things like IT procurement, tech inventory and tech stack optimization, we would say all of those things are, you know, prioritize.
IT operations.
Execute IT strategy. This is A.
But but this, that stuff also links to, you know, the assistant town administrator, like that's, you know, these, those things are cross-linked.
So there's sort of a, maybe a.
Because that's who we do that work if we staffed it.
But let's, if we group it right, then we're, this is not, A does not mean priority, it's just.
No, it's just.
Group this, just the first thing we're talking about, yeah.
It was, that was the easy one for me to start, right?
Yeah, but I mean, the finance, it's a plus, financial, a multi-year and different financial aspects are throughout those quarters.
So, yeah, for me, I do your budget plan, seniors and debt exclusion, debt exclusion management, inside levy debt, that's all. That's all one thing, right? That is, that is what, what is our approach, both inside and outside the levy? In the next, yeah, three to five years.
And do you see that including, I think, for the next five years, what, I mean, it's a spending, headcount expenditure? So would that also be sort of the vision of operations going to look like from a S E standpoint?
So what? I got some good advice from, from people who are better this time, about how using your five-year financial plan to overlay what an operational overlay looks like. So putting the staffing plan in our five-year plan is like what makes both of those things useful.
So you, you are gonna.
So to do if, if, if we had no, if we had no changes in our five, no changes in our staffing, our five-year financial plan, we'd say we're gonna increase localities at 3% a year and property tax 2.5% a year and have $120,000 new growth and that's that, right? We're just going to continue. So, so with, you know, that's why I think projecting out, you know, more than five years is kind of useless, because there's like, you know, too many unknowns. But unless we're doing some sort of outside force sort of thing, our revenues are pretty stagnant. And the stuff that changes it from a state level or from a federal level or stuff that's totally out of our control and unknown anyway. So the only usefulness in a five-year financial plan is saying, here's this thing you want to change, and you have a reasonably known number to apply to that. So yeah, staffing is the, staffing is what drives it. So for me, these things, budget plan, no comp class strategy, that's in that too. So I guess seniors and net exclusion, best use management, first words, inside levy. All of those things are kind of, what is the medium-term financial plan for the town? Both operationally and outside of levy.
Could you see the comp class being pulled out? Either as a, there is the negotiation aspect of implementing that through collective bargaining, that can be more in your plate. You would need, but there's also the direction that the board may or may not want to set in terms of where we want to be comparatively, right? Like, what's our, what's our target area to be, we want to negotiate towards that? I mean, I, I understand why it's in the financial plan, you need to understand what the potential market adjustment might do to your plan. But is that, would that be a separate thing you pull up? Or do you, is there a high, part of the high level, and you say that's more.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's, I I thought of it here as more higher level and the kind of actual execution of it in a fiscal 27 sense. It's something that this board has very clearly communicated to the unions, and if we don't execute it, then that's, that's a big wonder. So that's, the the execution piece of it is like something I'm going to do if it's on this charter or not, because we've already kind of promised it. So the, the goal.
Priority standpoint, can you make that a very high priority if it has to happen?
Yeah, so should I put it on the list?
Well, it's like, do you want it to be a measured goal or not?
Yeah, of course.
Right? So if we want it to be a measured goal, then we should keep it on.
Yeah, I think it's part of the communication and transparencies, you know, to actually.
I just see this, it could be a stand, it's an aspect that's standalone, but it is part of the board.
It's going to happen first. Right, since this is going to be a distinct marker that happens.
C in there?
Yeah, because if we're, yeah, we're.
What about?
You guess it's not, it's not linear, it's, yeah, distinct.
I was thinking like B plus, like it's part of what like, you know, gets highlighted.
Yeah, but I said five goals, so now.
Oh, okay, all right, I see.
So is there anything else that's going to be done as high priority as comp class that you can put in there?
So the IT procurement has to happen because of contract stuff. But I I feel I can lump that in with the other kind of IT pieces that don't necessarily have to be done.
And we could also identify that the IT procurement has a target date of X, but the inventory might be later, right? I mean, it was two separate totals of the same.
Maybe we could, we might want to have that inventory just as weight of.
So not your point, but what, what, I guess what I'm saying, and what I'm saying is when you see all those bullet points, these are all could be discreet, discreet executable action items under a broader goal, a global goal, meaning that they had to, could have tended to different deliverable things.
Yeah, so it's not theoretical, it could be parallel.
You're saying I can squeeze it all together, kind of, and we could separate it.
So the, I get what you're saying. The I, the tech inventory essentially has to be done in advance of our IT procurement. And the tech inventory and the tech, we've not spoken next time, but a little bit of tech stack, but tech inventory has to be done in advance of the IT, because I need to know what we're asking. I need you to support, and I need you to machines or whatever. So like this, yeah, this, this is A one.
But your IT procurement doesn't need to take into account specific software packages, whether they're.
Not because they're.
But they're part of.
Well, we need to know that the vendor can support the software packages that you have.
Right now they don't, right? Because like the, the software package that highway uses, it's not supported by Worldband.
So I understand for Worldband, that that service and hardware, you need to have the inventory, we're gonna have some vendor to do for you. The tech inventory is IT, it's broader.
Yep, okay, yeah, because this is, this is more of our enterprise system sort of things, that is not necessarily supported by our managed IT. It's IT in nature, but we don't pay worldwide managed, whatever. All right, what other stuff can we group here? We have a few. Under other, we have some, some real estate, some physical plant stuff. We've got town real estate planning inventory, which we've talked about a lot, and was a future year goal from last year. Including cemetery, Morrison Drive, support monuments. We have trail network, talk about moving out as a separate thing. And senior center fire station, other physical plant improvement, additions, can finish town hall renovations. And they're all.
I mean, I think there's a, there's a lot of business, land parcel, plan, right? People is in there, but then the physical facilities, inventory and assessment, which would include sort of, doesn't meet the needs of.
Yeah, I was thinking of our priorities and things we can finish this year, and we might want to just make a plan to finish town hall as opposed to say, finish that. Like, there are some things here that if we could just plan out, we could pick them off of future years as, as time, like the ceiling, that we, we're not doing this.
Like, what does it mean to finish town? Could you define what it means to?
There you go. That's what I mean. We should have a discussion. Define the scope and then put, put some solid bullet points on. It's like something that we need to bring up in a future meeting, and that's an extensive discussion on and say, look, we think the scope of this beats ceiling, H vac, office space, conference room, whatever it is.
We have 15 hours a week, so it was management, I think we dedicated to defining that scope.
I mean, capital as things like fire station assessment as a standing item in the capital plan. So that's also stuff we could.
Yeah, I mean, should we be prioritizing the capital plan?
So instead of individual items moving the capital plan, just have a capital plan and prioritization and update from C. CBC.
I mean, how, how would you, how many times does CPC matter?
We're gonna meet again in August, we get to set the date. Summer's difficult to schedule.
Yeah, yeah.
To post.
That's not a good. But the, with, yeah, like, when would that, it's hard to say, when would that committee like to say, because we've only met once, so it's kind of difficult.
Yeah, so our, our goal is to have recommendations for special town meeting.
Okay, soon.
Yeah, so it would be August, September meetings, prioritizing, having articles ready at the beginning of October.
Right, that means we need to be discussing at the end of September.
Yeah, it would be, you know, be getting stuff to you in, at your last September meeting. That's the.
So that we could do something in October.
And have a November special town meeting.
Yeah. It's kind of tight, but.
We've done a lot of work, you know, a lot of the data gathering and a lot of the prioritization happened this spring. And so the kind of nature of capital is that stuff doesn't really spring out last minute unless it like, really needs to be done last minute. So there's not, you know, it's, it's.
We feel confident we've written everything down.
I feel like we got 80% of what we need to do.
Okay.
Before the actual committee is met, because.
And some of the surprises, actually, we're handling an ATM, like the.
The garage doors. Which, which, by the way, we issued a notice of intent to award. We have a, a veteran who came in fractionally under the budget that we appropriated at a town meeting, and so those doors should be done this summer. So instead of seniors and our fire station, physical plan improvements and additions, just a goal to be an STM capital planning committee recommendation?
Because all of that is in there. If that's true, yeah. That's interesting.
But isn't there, I mean, I think, Jason, you were kind of expounding on the saying, there, there is space in existing buildings that could be used better. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I I feel like the opportunity that we're missing is the space we're not using.
So I think some of the, like, a land plan, understanding, here's the land we have, here are recommended uses for that land. Shouldn't we do something, some of the, here are the town facilities, town buildings, municipal buildings, part of space that's used or not used.
Yeah.
We have some opportunity to get, just, just plan, collection, inventory of that, that would be separately seen in capital.
Yep. Yeah, you have to be from, from empty offices in the back, right, to the second floor of.
So that, that's a question, that's a question I have for the board. So like, I, we have a plan to kind of reconfigure some of the office space here, right? The treasurer collector has half of the.
Yes.
And fully staffed, that is two people. And they don't need four workspaces. So got a kind of short money plan, put a wall and a window and folks around, it's like, that's something the board wants to discuss and where people.
But I would say, though, you would also be, if you're doing that, and you're aware of a broader view of facilities across.
It creates a select board office in the, in town hall.
Oh, well, then do it. Yeah, no, no, but I mean, I see, if you're doing that, you see, you would, because of this working group looking across the board, you're feeding that in, make sure, hey, this is, this is.
Now the new state of the world, and how does that impact other?
And and if there's like a plan where you can actually show a document, I think this is what's going to happen.
Things.
An improvement, but we could also have some swapped offices that you could preserve. You know, the senior center, when it's looking for more space, if you have like, okay, well, we need meeting space for two people to meet one-on-one, that could just be an office that was available here at town hall. So I I think that there are opportunities, small opportunities to expand capacity. Yeah. Right now, the veterans' agent has to go to another. Right now the veterans agent has to go to another town to do their work, right?
And they, they used to be a part of the senior center building committee was, where, well, you may not have space for them. Like, well, I know their office.
Well, they're filled up and stuff.
The point, but just to your point is there, there's, there are needs out there that we may not be aware. That could be.
You know, another big one is just the chief doesn't have a terrible amount of space at the fire station to do, um. Training, uh, in-room training, in-house training, or just have big meetings. Um, and so if they knew that there was an easy way to get space like that somewhere in town that wasn't at town hall, and they could reserve it. Deal with it on their own, then that would alleviate the needs, maybe build more space for the next couple of years. So there's stuff like that that comes up all the time.
Say something about a special town meeting, have special town meeting be the presumed and anticipated cadence for capital. That, you know, that, that is how we set up that CPC, um, to be able to come to special town. With regular updates. One other one that I added on here and I've. Is the, uh, Americans Dispelling Act Self-Valuation Transition Plan. It's something that we need to update to maintain our status as a housing choice community, which opens us up to a number of grant opportunities with the state. Um, ours is a hundred years old, um, I don't know that needs to rely. Needs elevated to a select order goal, because it's one of those other things like Dylan's gonna get it done, we're gonna. We're gonna pursue a number of grants, the, the, um, community compact grant is not available this year, but there's a number of other ones. Um, so we're going to do it, um, so just put it on here, maybe it becomes a staff goal or secondary or an extra goal or something like that, but I wanted to. Make you all aware of it. All of the stakeholders and have.
Yeah, I'd like to have some, like, all of this together, the communication, the committee stuff. Like the, the check-in.
Check-in, community assessment, and then. Boards and committees with department stuff, is it?
It's like a measured outcome, we certainly can't schedule a multi-board meeting this year and hold it, like, that is something we can do. And it's not a difficult goal to obtain, it's just about agenda building.
Certainly, we could also invite. Boards and committees to come to select board meetings over the next year, like, and make sure that each. Board and committee has an opportunity. But we could be like systematic and intentional, that we wanna make sure that every board and committee has the opportunity. Right, outside of budget season.
We start out by just suggesting that at those department head meetings. That you have the departments go back to the boards, you know, the boards that they report to, to let them know that they could. Be put on the agenda so we can discuss the other board's needs, with this board and how we can facilitate. Helping them do what they need to do.
I'm getting a little lost. Can we, uh, uh, not, not lost, but I'm just saying. Can we, we're solutioning.
We're, we're trying to combine some of these into either.
Fair, fair, but I, I wanna bring it back to what is, what is the goal? Not the execution.
Right, so I, I think that. It's a good, good point, so I think, I think this simpl- simplification. Is, um.
Works for me.
Is, uh, is kind of board communication to boards and committees slash departments. So to take these goals and how do we push that down, so to speak.
We wanna institutionalize select board communication to boards and committees around. Our stated goals, our progress against those goals.
I think a great way to mark this would say. The first meeting every month, we invite a board. Two boards, or have, have some metric where we say, there's, there's a cadence that this is when boards and committees or, or make it quarterly. Make it every other month, or, or come up with some metric, but have a, because if you say to us, have boards and committees report, we say, great, and then we get a twenty-six item agenda. So to have some sort of cadence where we anticipate.
Back to the calendar.
Because a lot of these boards, we're exempted, but a lot of these boards are, you know, creatures of the select board, and if you say, come report to us, they should come report here.
Yeah, certainly, we shouldn't have committees that, that aren't, you know. That aren't meeting, that this whole committee revitalization thing that aren't meeting, that aren't reporting, that aren't in line with whatever. But, uh, it shouldn't be like, uh, it shouldn't be a forced thing, they should want to.
But we, our, our objective is to formalize, instantiate communication between the select board.
Right.
And other boards, two-way communication. And that could be done a number of different ways, which.
So the implementations could be sort of, you know, potentially including invitations to meetings as well as. Like other communication mechanisms.
I think, I think how we do it, that might be a TA goal, just saying.
Right, right.
Formalized communication.
What, what, one of the feedbacks from staff to the select board was that they wanted to hear. More directly from us, so I think that it's in with that staff role as well.
Nice communication for it's like, with, uh, or some. So that is part and parcel of the. Sorry, some most that communicate stakeholders. Formalized communication.
I do wanna pull out a town mission statement from that categorization.
That's a standard.
Yeah.
We talked a lot about that last.
So my question on that is always, is it a mission statement for town government, or is it a mission statement relative to town residents?
So the master plan is the mission statement of the residents. Quite detailed mission statement of the residents. Uh, I think it should be the, the, yeah, the municipal government. Mission statement, you know, how are we gonna direct the goals of this town?
Are we gonna act and operate on behalf of our.
Yeah.
Residents.
Yeah, effe- effectively deliver services and support.
And how we do it, I read a lot about culturally, like, you wanna make, you know, parent, you know, and it was really. It's the stuff I probably am afraid of, but it's getting into all the. High-level ways we should do it, and, and set that vision.
We're self-actualizing as a.
I've said, I've said a few times, I wanna make this a place where I want to work, so like that sort of stuff.
Right.
Yes, and like three Latin words say all of that.
Alright, so, alright, so we, we, goal one, kind of IT tech inventory and tech stack. Goal two, uh, broad multi-year financial plan that includes. Um, goal three, execute comp class strategy relative to collective bargaining and individual contracts. Goal four, communicate, or for, formalized communications with select board and boards and committees. Including a town-wide board meeting with regular updates, um, so how, I, I don't think you should invite every chair of the board all at once, sort of thing. So I think it should be more intrusive, um, and then a town missions create, uh, work towards a town mission statement. What is the, what's the collective wisdom on, on what that process looks like on creating a town mission statement? Is it something that we do surveys of boards and commissions, right? Because it's not, it's not resident mission statements.
Maybe that can be an introductory within the topic for our first.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, cuz I have no clue how to get that started, so more input the better.
Right.
That's something that we should have.
Good, I mean, I think we could, we could do a little research about what some of, some other towns, I mean. Presumably other towns have done this, right? That is, that pyramid structure is a widely used structure with the mission statement, so. We could come up, we could track down three to five mission statements that we think might be compatible with.
That should be specific to, and it shouldn't be wildly divergent from Milford.
So, right, we should, like, it'll give us the idea of, like, what are the sorts of things that, that's not, that's not it useful to have as a mission.
By fiscal twenty-six, or by what ATM?
Like a mission statement.
Do you wanna have a time-based goal, or are we just wanting?
I think.
Definitely say, give a, say, say.
I like ATM, I, I think that's a good, good time.
It's just something that we have to be voted for, they can.
It could be in the book.
In the book.
It could be part of the business update that we'd be giving.
And so, right, it could be a goal to get in. So we could have a goal to get input from every board and committee about this.
Volunteers from boards and committees, say, if you wanna participate in a working group, cuz they, it'll be. It actually be pretty quick to say, can concepts be captured, you know, we wanna deal with, be transparent, wanna deal with. Give everybody dignity and respect, and we engage with them across the town, that sort of thing, then it's the worst mistake that's gonna be. Idea, get into a very pitty sort of three Latin word.
I don't know the three Latin word type of word.
What, wait, maybe three to ten Latin words are we talking?
Maybe Sanskrit, um.
But I think, right, I have not seen enough examples of these to know, like, what our goal is, so I, I feel like, for me, that's always the first step.
Just being honest with me, so somebody went to a discussion on it.
Yeah, I, I did, yeah. Well, like, I was, I was taken by that, it's like, oh, and, and you said that that was, that made a big difference in some organization.
Big difference at mine, yeah, we have mission statements and core values, and we talk about them often, they come across in everything.
We, we, didn't we lean more towards core values versus mission?
Core values are usually the supplements.
January, we seem to resonate more.
I think it was like.
Tangible.
Right, well, right, we wanted to get some content in the top of the pyramid, that our goals are supposed to be, like, fit under.
I would just like that.
See the pyramid again?
Cuz to me, the core values is more meaningful.
Right, well, okay, so like, include that in there, like, just, it just.
We're Wright's farm, not Wright's warehouse, like, that kind of big statement, right?
Right. So, yeah, we've been talking about the goals and the objectives, execution plan, all those things, but, right, that the top two tiers are.
Are. So that, that's something that we can certainly button up this year, I, the board's been working together the last couple of years. Again, to the point where we should be able to write these things up.
And I think, yeah, I think there will be people who will have a lot of input.
I think. From the other boards, committees, and people, th- those, I don't think we can dictate that.
No.
We could try, I don't think we'd be successful.
Yeah, I think that would be in contradiction of whatever those goals are.
Going forward.
Well, we're a very inclusive organization, we've been operated as a bottom-up organization for a very long time, and there's no reason to flip it around. It works, so bringing all that back up.
You can't flip it around. If you do flip it around, you'll be slipped right up.
So my whole point, that's my whole point, is we should be able to bring that up from the base, right?
Not have a hierarchical approach to building the hierarchy.
Yeah, that, yes, yes, exactly, no wire.
I, I do want to say, we haven't. We have talked about in, in this prioritization with real estate plan and inventory, and that was something that was. Future goal from last year, we talked about it as a, as a, as a town mayor matrix, it's something our town mayor is currently working on.
Right, six goal.
Yeah, also we'll talk about it.
I'm just gonna do that.
That's what you call managing up.
I'll have something for any of town meeting, there's plenty of examples, and you can make it and then it's specific. I'll send us the general biologue of the committee in the next couple of months.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
But I think the town, uh, real estate plan is something that. That's, the TA role is, is important in me and you and department heads, and how that kind of interacts collectively, how that interacts. Uh, but I think the town-wide real estate plan is, is more more transformative to what we, what we do as an organization.
I would think that'd be like a letter with a bunch of bullets you could put the same letter against. That's how I think, I mean, Mike mentioned land, I mentioned land, you mentioned land. In different.
Yeah, different facets.
Have to go back to it for it.
Yeah, cuz this, this is.
Facilities.
Did we just write it down once? Did we, did land plan just show up really once? We talked about it with one entry?
Yeah, there were more physical plant stuff, um, that came up, um, it was a lot, so a lot of communication, so a lot of financial planning, a lot of communication. And kind of culture values, uh, so I, there's a lot here, I think, after the last time. I should kind of send the email that about, I'm gonna formalize this a little bit better into, into a memo from me to you to say, this is what, this is what we discussed. And the renovation calls, so then we do. Do my review next year, you have like a document to say, this is what we said, please do.
That sounds great. Alright, so, last chance before we move on to the next agenda, does anybody have anything to add? A job leading tonight?
Sorry, one question, when do you expect to have that?
Hopefully by, if you're August sixth meeting, cuz it's easier to write it when it's fresh, so.
Time to be taking next steps against me. In your mind.
So, let's see, discussing the A.
No, not, 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 not specific, but high level, so we've got a list of stuff, so you've sort of. Sort of folded them into five or six things. What is the board's next step in terms of? Once, priority animal, I think we're prioritizing probably within those five or six, I think, probably gonna say all six, possibly gonna be. Targeted for FY twenty-six, but not all of it to get done in twenty-six, so what would our next steps be, once we have those five or six identified?
So I, I think I, I have the most ownership over A, B, and C. The tech, the multi-year financial plan, the comp class studies, so that's stuff that. It's kind of been coming upon me to just update you through either town manager report or agenda items that you guys put on, so A, B, and C are kind of on me. I think, indeed, the communication between the committees is something that I want direction from you all on, but what? Does that, does that look like? Who would you want to prioritize, right? Do you wanna hear from the town forest committee every quarter?
So, so to that point, does this board want to kind of like, done past? Like, you ran with select work policy, document, tech policies, I ran with capital, we wanna start thinking about where we wanna focus. Individuals, so, so it's like the land plan thing, Dylan is obviously working on it. I've started looking at it as well, that could be a small working group to get traction, and then that, I need to bring it back here, say, how you bring it forward. Any of it start to break up and execute, and set some target dates, especially with Jeremy's, the next year we know.
Yeah, I, I can, so there's, there's two, there's a couple of things there, so the first, the first thing is, you know, whatever the output is. You know, the table of results from Jeremy is, we need to then go assign people to it, it's the first thing, but then. I'm gonna have to work with Jeremy to make sure we get those individual discussion items put into agendas. So that you know when they're happening and that they all happen before they're due. I wish would be out of that table.
And I think we probably need to define, one, once again, I don't know if we run with it, but what are the deliverables specifically? And what are the target dates? And some of these are gonna have multiple deliverables. Yeah, I could see like the financial multi-year plan and. Yeah, I could see like the financial multi-year plan, Jeremy, could be, or you could have quarterly deliverables that culminates in a five-year roadmap, July, right? So how does that, I think, more of a, not an answer now, but think about it, what are the things? Who's gonna work on what, do we need to define the deliverables and the target dates, and then go our separate ways and bring it back based on agenda?
Yeah, with that outcome based stuff.
So I think that's a follow-on.
Yeah.
Also, I was just gonna say, also, some of these bigger buckets or bigger tasks will break out into subtasks.
And I, I would be, just for the record, I'd be interested in following up on the, like, the pyramid question, right, so, and. You know, sort of the, those, as well as the committee communication specs, like. That's something that I feel, um, invested in. So, but of course, I don't want to, I don't want it to be just be me, so like, anyhow, but it's, it's something that I would be happy to be, you know, part of those discussions.
I, I have a feeling that probably there's some there, we're all field, some investment individually, because that work came out of the last.
Right.
Season.
Yeah, so I think, I think the pyramid, right, the town mission statement, as I did, you know, we have multi-board input, core values. Um, so I think E is going to be driven a lot by T, right, your communications with.
Right.
So, um, I don't think all of them are kind of subservient to others, but I think E might be.
Yeah.
So you're saying, you're saying Alina has E and D.
Yeah, she was the last thing.
I would be happy to, like, participate in those, so I don't know, I mean, if we're doing something like, you know, subcommittees or working groups. I mean, of course, I care about the other ones as well, but I know people.
I, I think.
Invested more.
In a future.
Let me listen to, to something a little bit more succinct, but I think this, this is a really good roadmap for the, for the next.
All right, speaking of the next meeting. Agenda item number four is the next meeting, which is, uh, August 6th, 2025, um.
We will have an executive session.
Yes, there'll be an executive session, um, as Jeremy mentioned earlier in the meeting about the comp class study, uh, for us to give.
Sorry, it's an executive session relative to the trust property.
Oh, shoot, right, sorry.
Of the life estate.
That's a different one.
Uh, so the comp class study, if we kind of had, because we have the comp class study, and I'll share it with you likely tomorrow along with the, the valuation. Both of these things will be public documents that folks will see, but we just want to try to address an executive position first, uh, but. Having an executive session without me being able to place the comp class study within the. You know, confines of what a multi-year financial report looks like, you, you can't really say, well, what do we want to do with this? Uh, so that'll likely be the second meeting in August where we do that.
Okay.
Uh, so yeah, this is, um, for the, the trust properties acquisition.
All right.
The future agenda item. For the committee coverage, yeah, for, for this fiscal year. Need to revisit that, I don't know if we ever saw this.
We had a spreadsheet.
It's in the, um, it's in the packet, I keep moving it, so every agenda where it's listed it, if you click on it, it will show like the liaisons.
Okay.
So under future agenda items.
Okay.
Under that.
All right, uh, is there any other future agenda items anybody's looking for?
Yeah, one of my friends is interested in joining town forest committee. Yes, Matt, actually.
Was that two? Do you have two people that would?
The town forest committee just.
Didn't mean to disparage them earlier, you don't need to hear from my perfect corner.
All right, uh, then I'd be looking for a motion to adjourn. Uh, discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
All those against? All right, I, I would call this meeting adjourned at 8:45 PM, have an excellent night, everybody.
Yeah, thanks.
Ladies and boys, need to somehow hear.
Yeah, it's not like we have to have a summary output of the meeting.